Good evening. I'd like to call to order the city council meeting for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for July 12, 2021. Would you please stand as you are able and join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll of the members?
Ms. Nosler Beck.
Here.
Ms. Dozeman.
Here.
Ms. Weaver.
Here.
Ms. Hoppy.
Present.
Ms. Hulteen.
Present.
Mr. Urban.
Present.
Mr. Stites.
Present.
And Ms. Hutchinson is unable to attend this evening. Mr. Mayor, there is a quorum present.
Thank you. Counselors, in your packet you have city council minutes for June 28, 2021, and special study session notes for June 28, 2021. Are there any corrections to these minutes or notes? Seeing none, we'll let the minutes stand approved as presented. Are there any changes on the agenda by any of the members? We'll let the agenda stand as presented. We have four business items on our agenda. Items number one and two will be public hearings, ordinances on second reading, and we will take public comment on those at the public hearing when they arrive and in the in the order of the agenda. The third item is an ordinance on first reading, and then we will have item number four is a resolution of the council, and we will also take public comment on that when it comes in the agenda. But starting off our meeting, as we do many times on most of our meetings, we will ask for the invite the public to speak to us at our meeting. So we'd like to open the public's right to speak, and the members of the public may speak on any matter which is not on the agenda for three minutes. And I have a speaker's list. I don't have anyone signed up to speak during this public's right to speak. If there's anyone not signed up that would like to speak at this time, you may come to the podium. Please introduce yourself. You please give us your first name and last name and spell your last name. Give us your address, then you'll have three minutes.
I thank you, Jerry DeTulio, D I T U L L I O, address is 32nd and Newland, Newland. On here, I think it grounds that the city council about property taxes in Jefferson County. We should run into the property taxes. Let's go ahead and do this. As of June 14, 2021, Jefferson County is approximately 10% lower in property tax directions than G in 2020. That is places about $100 million, 30% on 10 million. Sorry, to actually go to here. As you know, many counties include Jefferson County, at just above the Yolke here, that has made 16.211.
Taxpayers are still struggling to pay their taxes. Several counties have received substantially less than the average year, with many individuals and businesses still struggling to recover from the effects of COVID-19 and shutdowns and lockdowns. In an effort to collect delinquent property taxes and to make special districts, which includes fire, water, sewer, cities, school district, and the county whole with regard to collections and distributions, the treasurer's office will be waiving delinquent property tax interest and taking multiple payments per Senate bill 21279 from June 16 through September 15, 2021, to encourage property owners to pay their delinquent property taxes. This is a one-year-only measure that should help taxpayers get caught up in 2021 and avoid a tax lien sale, which is in November. Please call 303-271-8330 for more information or visit the Jefferson County Treasurer's webpage to pay. If you get on the webpage, you'll see what your taxes are due, and you'll see the interest on the right. When you go to pay them with an E-check or credit card or a debit card, the interest has been deducted from all of that payments. And if you want to do it that way, you can make one or a full payment or the half. If you want to make multiple payments, like a payment plan, through September 15, you can call us and we'll do that. I just wanted to thank the counties that helped with this bill. It was Adams, Alamosa, Boulder. Jefferson County was the lead and Summit. The two sponsors was Tammy Story from Jefferson County. She was the prime co-sponsor in the Senate, and Dylan Roberts in the House from Raup County. So this really helps. We did it last year. I think it's going to help again this year. We sent out about almost 10,000 delinquency notices last week, and now we're getting people calling because the notice said if you pay your property taxes now, we can waive late interest, take multiple payments, you know, get it in to work with you.
Sorry.
And I love Queen. Thanks, Steve.
You're welcome.
If you have any questions on that, on the waiving of late. I got the yellow light, too. Thank you.
Okay.
Any questions or comments? Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Treasurer DeTulio. I will go to the clerk and see if there is anyone in the Zoom format who has asked to speak on tonight's meeting. We incorporate electronic format in our meeting.
If you are interested in speaking on your online, please raise your hand in the Zoom format at this time. No, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you very much. That will conclude our public's right to speak on our city council meeting agenda. We also take at the beginning of our meeting, we have a special study session, as I mentioned earlier, and we have one item on that, which is the discussion of a tree program, and we will take public comment on that. So if you would like to comment on that, I have one person signed up to speak. It looks like Jerry DeTulio has signed up to speak. Mr. DeTulio, if you'd like to speak on the study session item, you may do so now.
Thank you, Jerry DeTulio, D I T U L L I O, 32nd and Newland. I'll be quick. So I passed out to council this two-page document that Councilmember Weaver asked me to sort of type up a discussion we had about a tree grant removal program. On the front is some qualifications for the program and some funding mechanisms potentially that council has to discuss. On the back, I took the Wheat Ridge Business District facade grant application, turned it into a draft for the tree program, and hopefully that you'll look at this tonight and approve it for 2021 as a budget amendment. What I'm just asking is that if you do move forward, to keep this as simple as possible, you don't need to have a lot of brain damage with this as a trial program. And I think our Parks Department can handle it, or if you have a committee that could do it. I think the Parks Department might be better, just my recommendation, for the first, for the trial until you get your processes down. But you may want to have a forester inspecting the dead or dying trees before the grant is awarded, and then once the project is done for the property owner, then they can apply for the grant reimbursement. So it's kind of like what we did for the roofing permits back in 2009, when we did a 50% rebate on roof permits, do the planning department. So if you have any questions, I'm leaving. So good luck and have fun.
Okay. Thank you. That was the only speaker I had signed up. If there's anyone else here in the room who would like to speak, or, Mr. Clerk, do we have anyone online who would like to speak on the study session item?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Then we will close our public's right to speak. Thank you for joining us, and we will move to our regular agenda item on the meeting. And this is item number one. Ms. Hoppy, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill Number 10-2021, an ordinance amending chapters two and 26 of the Code of Laws of the City of Wheat Ridge to prohibit tents and makeshift structures within the floodplain and to amend the floodplain permitting and variance process. At issue, the Mile High Flood District Regulations specifically prohibit tent and makeshift structures in the floodplain due to numerous public safety issues. Staff is requesting that council amend the city floodplain regulations in chapter 26 to adopt similar regulations. In addition, staff is seeking to improve the approval process for Class II floodplain permits and the appeal process of the floodplain manager's decision. Among the changes, staff is proposing to remove the Board of Adjustment as the review board and approval body for the floodplain permits and add the Building Code Advisory Board as the body to hear the appeals.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on second reading. It is a public hearing. It is not quasi-judicial. I'm going to open the public hearing. And, Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this?
We do. Mr. Mark Westberg is here this evening to give a brief presentation.
Yeah. So we gave a presentation, a pretty extensive presentation at study session a month or so ago, maybe two months ago. Time is fuzzy these days for me. If staff wants me to go through that presentation, or if council wants me to go through that presentation again, I certainly can. If not, I'm just here to answer questions and that kind of thing. So we've got the presentation if you guys want us to, but we don't have to if you guys remember what happened two months ago.
Okay. Thank you. Before we go to questions from council, I will open this up to the public to speak on this agenda item number one. If you would like to speak on this item, you may do so now. I don't have anyone signed up to speak, but if you're here and haven't signed up, you're more than welcome to speak, or I'm going to ask the clerk to sort of right now disable our lights on the podium and then see if we have anybody with on our Zoom format who would like to speak.
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. So we will close our public's right to speak, and I will open it up to questions from council. Ms. Hoppy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Westberg, can you explain a little bit of the process of why you are requesting to change it from the Board of Adjustment to the Building Code Advisory Board?
So on the appeals process, we're trying to bring basically our floodplain regulations in line with the Building Code regulations, which is if you're disputing some of the technical things that the chief building official or the floodplain administrator has conditioned on a permit or why they denied a permit, then it goes to the same technical board, the Board of, what do we call them?
Adjustment.
The Building Code Advisory.
Thank you. Sorry. I've never been before then before, so I have a hard time remembering
who they are. The Board of Adjustment just raises a lot of, sort of just the name itself raises a lot of red flags with the folks at FEMA in the state when I was talking about doing this change. The job of the Board of Adjustment is to grant variances, and variances are a really bad thing in floodplain administration and a dirty, sort of a dirty thing to do and put your whole program in jeopardy. And so when I mentioned Board of Adjustment, they just all twitched. And they're really, you know, their job is to grant variances to the rules, and that's not what we're doing with an appeal we are, but it's a very technical kind of review that needs to be done. And we think the folks that staff our Building Code Advisory Board are much more qualified just by virtue of who they are. We've got architects and contractors and folks that just understand the things that are going on a little better than the Board of Adjustment does, and that's why we've asked to make that change.
Any other questions from council? Ms. Nosler Beck.
I just, around District Four, around the creek, there's a lot of confusion around that area as to what is city property versus Jefferson County open space versus private property. And I think, you know, obviously, you know, no one's allowed to do this on private property to build makeshift structures. But with the, how does that kind of interface with Jefferson County and those various other areas?
So fortunately, the city owns about half of the floodplain areas that are within the city of Wheat Ridge. They're just flat out owned by the city, which is great. And so we would actually regulate those. We already have a regulation in our code that prohibits camping within our city parks, which includes all the open space areas that the city owns. The rest of it's owned by a combination of private folks. There is some Jefferson County open space, especially on the far west side of town. There's also a fair amount of our floodplain that's owned by CDOT. This would apply regardless of who owns the property, whether it's the state, the federal government, the city, or private property. This is a regulation. We're trying to keep people from making bad decisions on where they sleep at night, and sleeping in the floodplain is a bad decision to make because we could, not right now, it's not raining right now, but at any time you could have a flood come down the creek that could create a problem, as the example was shown in the staff report of the 38-year-old gal that died in Lakewood Gulch, I think it was Lakewood Gulch, a couple of years ago. That area was 10 feet underwater suddenly, and it wasn't even a flood, it was just a high-water event. And so that could really happen anytime on our creek. So we just want to keep people out of those dangerous areas.
Okay. Thank you.
Any additional questions before I close the public hearing? Ms. Hulteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Westberg, looking through the notes from the Planning Commission, there was a question regarding the differentiation between sleeping in a tent and sleeping in a sleeping bag. And I just want to check and make sure that we are comfortable that this ordinance is addressing any type of sleeping arrangements and not contingent just on being in a tent.
Yeah, so I, yes, it would apply to all those situations. I mean, if someone wants to go lie down and take a nap in our park in the middle of the day, in theory, they can do that. But if someone's going to stay there overnight and sleep overnight, that's going to be something that we're going to want to regulate because it's not a safe place to do that.
Thank you.
Ms. Weaver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you for being here. I was just curious because where, in District Three, we have Lena Gulch, which is sort of canyonized. Is that a fair thing to say? It has concrete barriers on both sides, so it's extremely dangerous in the floodplain for camping. But I often also see kids walking down there, and they end up being at the farm oftentimes. And of course, I have the same stress of people camping in the floodplain. And I was just curious, I know we talked about some signage about that. Will there be signage about just being in the floodplain or only camping? And where will that signage be? I thought I remember some signage on that.
We've not proposed to make any new signs as a part of this code amendment. Certainly, we can work with parks to do that. We've got some signs on not littering. We could certainly add no camping to those signs if that was something council wanted us to do. Looking over at Karen, I don't think she'd oppose us to do that.
Well, this isn't on parkland. I think that's, it's in the sort of strange, not, well, I guess it's the water right-of-way. Is that what it is?
Everything is owned by somebody. It's either owned by us or the adjacent property owners, along Lena Gulch. And in your case, where Lena Gulch flows through your property, it's all owned by you. Certainly, we don't have an issue with people sort of walking around in the floodplain during the days and stuff. There are places where it might be more difficult than others to get out if a flood was to hit. Part of the reason we have our sirens is to provide warning to people who are outside. Certainly, if something happened, Maple Grove Reservoir failed catastrophically or was starting to fail catastrophically, the sirens would go off. We'd mobilize our police department to get as many cars as we could up and down the gulch to get people out of harm's way and those kind of things. But this wouldn't be something we'd be regulating, you know, people walking around the floodplain. That's not something we're going to regulate. It's the spending the night and going to sleep for eight hours at a time is what we're trying to prevent.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the instance where you have parkland that's in the floodplain, if there was an event that required a tent to be put up over several days, would that be permitted? Or would there be a way to permit a tent being put up in that area for a particular purpose? Or does this prohibit all structures temporarily?
This would prohibit all makeshift structures. And I don't know, you know, I'm trying to think of an instance where we've put a tent up in the floodplain for some event and we haven't. Most of, you know, a lot of Anderson Park today is in the floodplain, so certainly when we do the Carnation Festival or something, you know, tents go up and things like that. But they're not, they're not being used for human habitation. They're being used for an event, and somebody's not going to sleep there overnight. And so there's not that danger associated with that. And just FYI, when we get our new maps done in a couple of years, a lot of Anderson Park will be out of the floodplain. So that won't be an issue at our main event site, which is Anderson Park.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions before I close the public hearing and ask for a vote? And we're going to close the public hearing. Ms. Hoppy, may I have a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill Number 10-2021, an ordinance amending chapters two and 26 of the Code of Laws of the City of Wheat Ridge to prohibit tents and makeshift structures within the floodplain and to amend the floodplain permitting and variance process on second reading and that it take effect upon adoption by signature of the mayor and city clerk.
Second. We have a motion and a second by Mr. Stites. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We will move to agenda item number two. Ms. Hulteen, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce Council Bill Number 112021, an ordinance approving the disposal by demolition of city-owned buildings associated with the improved Wadsworth Project. At issue, the city owns two buildings along Wadsworth Boulevard that were purchased in order to provide the necessary right-of-way to the improved Wadsworth Project. These two buildings need to be demolished in order for the street improvements to be constructed. Staff is requesting authorization from council to demolish the buildings.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on second reading. It is a public hearing. It is not quasi-judicial. I'm going to open the public hearing. And, Mr. Goff, do we have a staff report on this?
Yes, Mr. Mark Westberg again.
Okay. Mr. Westberg.
So it's pretty simple. Raleigh Bertos, the old Raleigh Bertos Restaurant, by the way, I checked on Google today. They're now showing the new location on Google of Raleigh Bertos, which is just a building away. And there's a small house at the north end. It's a property that has two houses on it, are both in the way of our project. We actually own four buildings now on Wadsworth, but two of those are in the way. We need to demolish those, and according to Mr. Goff, we need to get your permission to do so. So that's why we're here tonight. This one's pretty easy, I hope.
Okay. And it does, it does require a two-thirds majority vote of city council to dispose of any city property.
Okay, so we'll be looking for a minimum of six affirmative votes tonight?
That's correct, a charter requirement.
Okay. Thank you so much. Okay, before we go to council questions, I would like to open this up for the public to speak on this. Let's see, this is agenda item number two. I don't have anybody signed up to speak. Is there anyone here who's not signed up who would like to speak? You may do so now. And I'm going to ask the clerk if we have anyone on the Zoom format who's signed up to speak.
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. And I don't see anyone here, so we'll close our public comment portion and open this up to questions from council. Ms. Hoppy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Westberg, approximately how long will it take for the demolition to occur? And if it is an extended period of time, would there be an opportunity for us to take the spray-painted and blighted boarding condition of the old Raleigh Bertos and make it look a little bit better if we're going to be waiting a while and looking at that for a while?
So the demolition of the two buildings will be done by the contractor doing the project. So we hope to come to council on August 23 to award that contract, and we hope to then start construction sometime in September. So I don't, you know, that'll be up to their schedule on what they want to do. Once they sort of take the contract and they take control of those two buildings, we can certainly talk with our facilities folks about the nice board that says moved with the big arrow pointing to the right. I'm guessing that's the one you're talking about. We could certainly look at something like that.
Ms. Hoppy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Would that be something that we would have to come back to council because it would potentially cost us money? Or would that be something that we would be able to take care of or urban renewal can take care of or?
We are currently sort of taking care of those two buildings already. We've had the utilities transferred over to us. I think we shut off all utilities at Raleigh Bertos, but at the small house, we've left the lights on so that hopefully another people that might want to break in there listening tonight will know that we've left the lights on to, you know, make people think someone still lives there. But we shut off the water and the sewer and trash and all those other things at those facilities.
Councilmember Hoppy, we'll take care of it before the building's demolished, get it cleaned up a little bit.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Westberg, I had a question for you. Do you know if we have any environmental remediation to do prior to the demolition of those structures?
Nothing was identified in the simple Phase One type of, if you're familiar with that terminology, with the Phase One review of those buildings. Nothing was identified on those, but we've basically left that in the contractor's hands to do a Phase Two and identify anything and then mitigate those things. Given the age of both buildings, asbestos is always a possibility, but we've not looked into that. And they'll need to pull a demolition permit from our building department and then comply with all state requirements for asbestos and whatever else they might find. They're not gas stations, so hopefully this is not too bad.
Thank you. Any further questions before I close the public hearing? We're going to close the public hearing. Ms. Hulteen, may I have a motion?
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Urban. Did you have?
No.
Oh, okay.
All right. All right. I move to approve Council Bill Number 112021, an ordinance improving the disposal by demolition of city-owned buildings associated with the improved Wadsworth Project on second reading and that it take effect upon adoption and signature by the mayor and city clerk.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Mr. Urban. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion passes seven to zero. A supermajority has been attained. The motion passes.
Thank you. We will move to agenda item number three. Ms. Nosler Beck, would you please introduce this item?
Thanks, Mayor. Council Bill Number 12-2021, an ordinance amending Chapter Seven of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws Concerning Elections. At issue, this ordinance will revise the city's election chapter to conform to revisions in state election laws.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on first reading to set the date, time, and location for a public hearing. Ms. Nosler Beck, may I have a motion, please?
I move to approve Council Bill Number 12-2021, an ordinance amending Chapter Seven of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws Concerning Elections on first reading. Order published, public hearing set for Monday, July 26, 2021, at 7:00 p.m. in city council chambers and that it take effect immediately upon adoption.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Ms. Hoppy. Is there any, would the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We will go to agenda item number four. Ms. Weaver, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is Resolution Number 35. This is Resolution Number 35, 2021, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2021 general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $1,600,000 for contractual building division services. At issue, the building division has experienced an extremely busy year thus far. The volume of work reflects a robust mix of residential and commercial construction and, excuse me, and by volume and revenues represents the busiest first and second quarters for the building division on record. As a result, the initial amount of funding budgeted in the 2021 budget and subsequently authorized in the initial, excuse me, in the initial contract with CAA will be far exceeded by the end of 2021. Additionally, the SCL Lutheran Hospital campus has begun applying for permits associated with their new hospital at the Clear Creek Crossing Campus. The revenues and permits fees associated with this hospital campus were not included in the 2021 budget. Staff is requesting a budget supplemental of $1,600,000 to cover the estimated 2021 expenses associated with the CAA contract based on current. associated with the CAA contract based on current revenue projections.
Thank you. Uh, this will be a resolution of the council. Do we have a further staff report? Mr. Goff?
We do. Ken Johnson, our community development director, would like to provide a quick update on this.
Mr. Johnstone.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Good to see you. Um, as, as you all know, Charles Abbott Associates, our contract, uh, building division, uh, full-service contract, uh, is compensated based on a formula whereby, uh, the city essentially shares back revenues, uh, from three primary sources, building permit fees, uh, plan review fees, and contractor license fees. Uh, the contract is, is structured such that the higher the revenues in a given month, uh, the per-rot of shareback to CAA, the percentage decreases. So that's a favorable structure for the city and one that's coming into play a lot this year, which is a good thing. Uh, in the original contract approval, the annual amount of maximum compensation, uh, was capped at $825,000 unless subsequently authorized by city council, uh, to, to go further. Uh, each year we budget for what we estimate to be those three revenue sources, and this year we budgeted $801,000. As noted by Ms. Weaver, uh, we've had just record volumes of permit this year and we're starting to issue permits for the SCL Hospital Campus, which is estimated to be a 500-plus million-dollar, uh, project. That'll be over two years in terms of the permitting, uh, this year and next. So those two factors for, really kind of in equal parts are driving this $1.6 million request. Uh, we, we feel like the SCL project will generate, uh, in terms of the share from Charles Abbott, a little over 800, and just general volume that's continuing will be a little over 700 in additional sharebacks. So that's how we got to the, the 1.6 million. Glad to answer questions.
Okay. Thank you. Before we go to questions from council, I'd like to open this up to, uh, questions from the public. If you're, I have no one signed up to speak on this, but if you have not signed up to speak and would like to, now is your opportunity. And I will ask the clerk if we have anyone in the Zoom format who has raised their hand to speak on this item.
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. And I don't see anyone coming forward, so I'm going to close our public comment and open it up to questions from council. I don't see any questions from council.
Mr. Mayor, just, just in case we, uh, just in case it wasn't clear in, in what Mr. Johnstone said in, in the council action form, this will not have a negative impact on the city's fund balance. Um, the revenues will more than offset this additional expense.
Thank you for that clarity. Um, Ms. Weaver, may I have a motion on this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes. I move to, excuse me, I move to approve resolution number 35 dash 2021, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2021 general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $1,600,000 for contractual building division services.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. You had one today, so who had their hand? Who was, Ms. Hulteen, uh, was the second on this one? Is there any discussion on the motion? Ms. Hulteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make a comment that this is a really exciting thing to be approving tonight, that we have this much activity in our city and some of its big things we've been watching, but I know tucked in here are a lot of little things and it's just exciting to see this much energy and excitement and investment in our city right now. So congratulations to everyone and I'm looking forward to seeing this stuff come out of the ground.
Thank you. Additional discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
The motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you. That concludes our, uh, agenda items on, uh, tonight's, uh, meeting. I will now go to city managers' matters. Mr. Goff?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Mr. Urban brought this to our attention last week as he's, he's always on top of these things. Um, council may remember back in, in March of 2020, uh, city council approved a emergency declaration, uh, for the COVID pandemic. Um, that declaration automatic, was set to automatically expire when the state of Colorado's emergency declaration expired, and that did expire, um, last Thursday, I believe, July 8th, or whatever day that was. I think it was last Thursday. Um, so, um, we're no longer under the emergency declaration, um, 15 or 16 months later, I guess. Um, thankfully, we didn't have to use it, um, very much at all. So, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, city man, uh, city attorneys' matters, uh, Mr. Goff?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We will go to elected officials' matters and start with Ms. Nosler Beck.
Thanks. Um, just Karen, since you're here, um, the video that, that Parks and Rec put out on social media of Anderson Pool, um, I've gotten, I posted it to my social media networks and people have been going, where is that place? That is so cool. I'm like, it's in Wheat Ridge, of course. And so, anyway, um, just congrats on making it work this summer because, um, everybody's been able to get their reservations and get in there and, um, that video was really awesome. It kind of is competing with Waterworld.
That's great. Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Urban? Anything tonight? Ms. Dozeman?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Weaver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, back to Parks and Rec, we are continuing with our, our fun program called Regenerate Wheat Ridge, uh, with another program on Wednesday morning this week. And we'll be talking about one of my favorite topics, goats, and why they would be in your parks. Uh, so I hope you'll come join us. Uh, it, it starts at 8:30 and if you go to the Rooted and Fun, I'm looking at, where do they need to go? The Rooted and Fun dot com, Rooted and Fun dot com, and you will be able to sign up for that. So, uh, again, I want to thank the city and, uh, Parks and Recreation for just assisting with this really fun program that we've been working on. So come out and see the goats and sign up. So, thank you.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Hulteen?
I will continue singing the praises of our Parks and Recreation Department tonight, uh, specifically the aquatics staff, um, which includes my son. Uh, he and I are both working for the city of Wheat Ridge tonight. Um, but we had, uh, our darling neighbors over for dinner last night and, uh, they both, uh, both the husband and wife, um, had lifeguarded for years and years and years and unprompted just started talking about how impressed they were with the quality of lifeguarding and, and they know the difference. And so I just want to, you know, kudos to all the staff that's involved in that. And then, um, you know, I, I was swimming in Wheat Ridge years before I lived here and long, long believed we had the best, best indoor and outdoor pool. And, uh, last week I was swimming and there's a guy swimming almost every time I'm there and he's a really good swimmer and I started chatting him up a little bit. And he is leaving next week to, um, go swim at the Nationals and is expected to rank in the top two or three in several, um, several events. So I, I want to wish Rob Behringer good luck. Um, but it was just a reminder that we have a lot of great people who choose to come to Wheat Ridge to take advantage of our extremely, uh, valuable facilities. So kudos to Karen and her crew and, um, I'm really proud of, of our Parks and Rec and our aquatics department. So go Wheat Ridge.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Stites?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a reminder, everybody, it's getting hot outside, so we all have seniors and, and people in our neighborhoods that, that can use some extra help. So, um, if you can, take care of your neighbors and if, uh, you need any supplies for that, find it and buy it in Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Hoppe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just wanted to remind our community that the Wheat Ridge Poultry and Meats at 5650 West 29th has a community fridge and community pantry. Um, I stopped by there on Thursday to drop off some items and it was actually empty. And so if you have an opportunity to, um, donate some stuff there, I spoke with Wheat Ridge Poultry and Meats and, um, I had posted it on social media and they've gotten some more donations. Um, and I've been kind of collecting some stuff to take with me again tomorrow. So, uh, if you have the opportunity to be able to help out, um, our neighbors who need some help, then that's a really great program.
Thank you very much for, for bringing that forward. That's in my neighborhood, so I will try to get down there and make a donation. We support them in that effort. Uh, I want to thank the citizens who joined me for coffee, uh, Coffee with the Mayor last Saturday. We were back, uh, back live, if you will, uh, at Vanola's Restaurant on the second, uh, second Saturday at nine o'clock. So we'd love to have you join us. Uh, there, we are now in the, in the throes of summer. If you've, if you haven't been outside, you, you'll recognize it as soon as you go out and we have lots of, lots of children, children playing and in the evening, uh, citizens walking and having a great time in our city. So if you would please, uh, slow down when you drive and be careful, uh, out there and be careful of the people around you and remember to have a good time. And, um, because we live in a great place. So if there's no further business to the council, we will adjourn this meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I have one announcement.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr., I'm, you know, I've got to, I'm going to start there in the future. Our clerk.
We're going to have to raise this seat up just a little higher.
You know, that's, that's correct. We're going to raise your profile, so please.
Anyone who is interested in running for an office in the city of Wheat Ridge might want to, to attend a candidate orientation session, which we will hold Thursday, July 29th at noon in this room, in council chambers. The meeting is free and open to the public. The topic will be, so you want to run for public office? What's it like to serve and how do you get elected? We will record that meeting in its entirety and it will be available later that afternoon to anyone who is unable to attend or wants to watch it again. There will be more details about attending either in person or virtually posted on the city's website in the next few days. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, thank you to our clerk and my apologies again for not recognizing you and I, I apologize to our city treasurer. Mr. Miller is here. Mr. Miller, is there anything you'd like to say tonight? Okay. Thanks so much. All right. Well, I hope everybody, uh, got to say what they wanted to say. And so I want to thank you all for joining us and now I will adjourn this meeting and we will reconvene for our special study session in about five minutes. Good. Well, we can probably get this done pretty quick. Okay. I'd like to call to order our, um, special study session for the Wheat Ridge City Council for July 12, 2021. We have, uh, one, um, agenda item, which is our city tree program. Um, and I will, uh, go to Mr. Goff to introduce this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, you pretty much said it. Um, council members Weaver, Stites, and Hulteen did request, um, back in March to have a, a future study session item to talk about a potential city tree program to help mitigate dead trees on private property and, and provide trees for sale to Wheat Ridge residents. So, um, we'll turn it over maybe to one of them if they want to introduce it, but we do have Karen O'Donnell, our Parks and, um, direct, Parks Rec, what, what's your title? Park, Parks and Recreation Director.
Okay.
Zach Lovato, our, our Parks Forestry and Open Space Manager are both here to, uh, help answer any questions. Ms. Weaver?
This was, uh, brought up by several constituents in, across several districts and, and then I had some experience with some neighbors in District Three, uh, regarding dead trees that were on property lines, uh, and threatening fences, buildings, things like that. And, and what came up was that with our, our Siberian Elms and with some of our older trees that, that are no longer, that are dying or dead, uh, it's, it's quite a, a big cost to get rid to get rid of one of those giant trees, uh, between, you know, sometimes between two and five grand for, for a tree. Excuse me, so. Smoke and allergies. Just in the air. So it seemed like a great opportunity to. To create a program, I will get there. Yeah. So it seemed like a great opportunity to create a program that would help with, um, with, on, on private property, right? We, we do have ways to mitigate, uh, tree issues on private property. But this is a specific, uh, program idea that certainly can be expanded in years to come. Uh, but really to address the, the dying tree. And then to balance it as, as not necessarily the same program, but as another companion program or to bookend, um, the ability for Wheat Ridge residents to get, uh, what do I, what do we want to call them? The approved, approved trees that are not, um, as susceptible to disease and some of the, the current, um, thoughts and research from Park and Recreation and Forestry around, around getting trees to people in Wheat Ridge to replace those trees. And so, uh, this, the first aspect of the program is to create basically a, a grant program. Whereas people would, um, if they had a dead tree, they would get an, uh, they would first, um, and, and Karen and I have been discussing, uh, there is the ability that Park and Rec has to send out a expert forester who would declare a tree dead. That sounds like a very sad thing, but they would declare it dead or dying possibly if, if it's a, a disease infested tree. And then a resident would, would, uh, get an estimate hopefully from a list of local tree. Arborists, arborists? And, um, and then they would have the work done. They would submit to the city a, a, the receipt and be able to get up to a certain amount reimbursed for that, up to half of whatever it is. And, and we've outlined it here in the documentation. And up for discussion tonight, you know, I, I'd like to see this program start with, with 25 to 30, 30 grand. Uh, because I think that would be, we, we could touch a lot of houses with that and maybe do up to either a thousand or 1,500 per property, not necessarily per tree. Because I'd really like to see, uh, the maximum, um, amount of people be able to get a little bit of reimbursement. Why is this an issue? Um, it is an issue because code enforcement, we do have codes on our books that require people to mitigate these trees if they are threatening another person's property, um, on the property line. So that was, that was the, the other reason for, for going forward with this. And so, so I was kind of hoping we could talk about first that and then, um, then what the great news is, is that Park and Recreation was already thinking along the lines of creating a tree program for the residents of Wheat Ridge. And so I don't know if it even needs to be part of the, the grant issue. Um, and so this is where I'm going to pass it back to Karen and she can talk a little bit about that.
Thank you. Hello, Mayor, members of council, really nice to be here with you this evening. Um, and thank you for that wonderful summary, um, council member Weaver.
We did have a, a conversation and talked through this. And I have also talked with Jerry DiGiulio, who shared his thoughts earlier. And I know that you all have copies of, um, the highlights of the program that he put together along with the, this great application. I think what I want to speak to is that I've had conversations with Zach, who is our, our manager of Parks Forestry and Open Space. And he manages our forestry team, of course. And wanted to make sure that he felt that we had the capacity to manage a program of this nature. And, and he does feel that we, we do. So, um, I, I really think this is really nicely laid out in a very simple fashion. There's other, some other considerations we, we could put into place such as if we want specific parameters about, you know, trees that are within 10 feet of a property line or trees that could impact their neighbor if the tree was to come down, um, things like that. If we wanted to be more specific, I've reached out to other communities and I know Brighton, for example, has a program like this. And they, they look at trees that, that have to be 20 inches DBH, which is diameter at breast height. I learned that today doing some research, which is the measurement of a, a tree trunk. So, um, they're focusing on larger, older trees. We don't have to take that approach, but that's just one of the ways that they manage it. But essentially, if this is something that council is interested in funding, it's something that we could manage in, within our department. And then the other, um, piece that council member Weaver mentioned was the tree purchase program. And that's something that Zach and his team has worked on. So I would like for him to turn on his microphone and tell you guys a little bit about it.
Yeah, thanks, um, council and Mr. Mayor. We are looking at providing a, uh, tree sale for the community. We, we get some nice, uh, trees from the Colorado, Colorado Tree Coalition. And, uh, we purchase those for our own in-house use every year. But we figure that if we, um, we add to that order a few extra trees, we can, we can meet our goal of achieving, uh, an increasing canopy cover for the city. So internally in our section, forestry section, our goal is to be plus 50 trees every year. So if we take down 100 trees, we want to plant 150. And I think we would have that same goal for privately owned trees as well. Or at least to be one, one for one. So if somebody, um, takes a tree down in their backyard, it would be nice to replace it. Trees have a tremendous amount of, uh, environmental, um, uh, benefit from energy savings for shade for housing, housing, you know, the, the, um, the, uh, air conditioning that goes, uh, the electricity that is required for air conditioning, um, is mitigated by shade. Also, uh, protecting, um, ground cover and keeping erosion from happening. Also, um, uh, the carbon sequestering is, is huge. So there's, there's a lot of benefits to having a huge, uh, canopy in the city. Obviously, we're really proud of our Tree City USA here in Wheat Ridge. Um, we have a lot of mature trees out there. So it's a good idea to, now that the city is starting to get to the point where, um, you know, a lot of the trees were planted as the development happened, you know, 50, 60, 70 years ago, they're getting to that point where they need to start coming down. But we do want to replace them. So, um, our plan is to purchase, uh, a few hundred trees and, and have them available for sale at cost to the public. We're budgeting for it this next year. Um, and we're, um, going to be, um, putting out some more information around what that sale looks like, uh, here in the fall. But, um, what we do is we, we place the order in the fall and, um, ideally we'd have them ready to go in the spring. One of our biggest, uh, challenges is storage. Because we buy the trees from places like, uh, Oregon and Washington, um, where the weather's different. The trees already have leaves when they're delivered to Colorado in, in April. But Colorado still gets freezing weather and snow. So we have to keep them indoors. So we're, we're limited somewhat to our indoor storage. We have some, some garages over at the Public Works campus where we can keep these trees indoors and keep them warm. But, um, uh, we'll, we'll make the space so that we have enough trees, um, for this tree sale. And, um, I, I think the, the tree removal program is, is great. We, our arborist, uh, James Romout, he's, uh, he's, uh, certainly well-versed in, in all areas of tree assessment. And, um, we can, we can help our residents with assessing the needs of their, their privately owned trees. We work with a lot of contractors. We also license contractors in the city. So, um, maybe there's a way we can, we can partner with them. And, um, if they're, they're guaranteed a certain amount of work, they can provide a discount to, uh, Wheat Ridge, uh, residents. And, um, and then we also probably ought to want to, um, discuss the, the criteria for, for those grants and make sure that the, the trees meet the needs. One thing I want to be careful of is there's a lot of weedy trees. There's some, maybe, um, there's, there's sucker trees that, that pop up in between fence lines and, um, those don't necessarily always qualify as trees, but they do cause issues. So, um, I think making sure that we, um, identify those parameters and communicate what those are, uh, would, would, would help tremendously so that we're, um, ensuring that we are, um, taking care of the tree canopy cover that we're, we're after versus just, um, you know, weedy tree mitigation work, so.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to clarify, as I understand it, if a tree is on, um, my neighbor's property on the property line, but the limbs are over on my property, at the plane of the property line, does that make the limbs then my responsibility as the neighboring property?
So it's, I, from my understanding, this is the, the, um, if the tree is alive, then anything that is on your property, you can remove. So if you draw a, a plane all the way up to the sky on your property line, anything, anything that's hanging over onto your property, you can cut. But, um, it would be best if you talk to your neighbor and, and prune the tree properly, because you don't want to necessarily cut right at the property line. You want to cut that in a way that benefits the, the health of the tree. So if, hopefully you have a good relationship with your neighbor and you can, you can cut where, where the cut makes sense and, um, and help keep that tree healthy. Now, if the tree is dead, it is, from my understanding, again, and I'm not, you know, um, legal expert in this, but, um, if the tree is dead, then it is the responsibility of the, the, the owner of that tree to take it down. Because if you have a dead tree on your property and it falls in a windstorm and damages somebody else's, um, they are liable. Their insurance is liable. Now, if that tree is alive and it falls in a windstorm or a snowstorm, then your insurance will pay for the damage.
Okay.
So, uh, so it makes a difference if the tree is dead or alive. It, it is well worth your time to be friendly with your neighbors and, and trim the tree properly so that the tree has the best chance to survive. And, um, and then with roots, roots as well, you can, um, that's, that's something that, that comes up, uh, a lot where somebody, let's say you want to, um, put in a driveway, but there's some tree roots that are in the way. So you're like, well, that's my neighbor's tree, the roots are over here, I'll just go ahead and cut it. So you cut the roots and you install your driveway. If that activity happens to damage the tree and/or kill it, you could be responsible for the damage of that tree. So just keep in mind that, you know, anything that's on your property, you, you, you can do whatever you want with. But if it has a negative effect on that tree, then you could be responsible for the replacement or the value of that tree.
And then, um, tree, tree branches that are on like, uh, light poles or power lines, are those the responsibility of, of the, uh, power provider? Or is that the, um, homeowner's responsibility?
So, um, anything that's the power line from, from pole to pole is a responsibility of utility. So XL in this case. If it's from the utility pole to the house, that's a responsibility of the property owner.
Okay.
But you, you should always call XL in any case, um, to make sure that they understand, um, you know, what it is that you're trying to, to do. Sometimes you have to drop the power lines, yes, physically take them out of the tree and drop them on the ground, which, um, you know, interrupts service for a chunk of the, of the, of the block, city block. And you get a contractor in there to quickly do the work and they raise the line back up and turn the power back on. I think this grant program would be great. I mean, I know we're talking about, um, taking trees down, but it also probably would be good to, um, take a look at if there's a, a case where a property owner has, um, has been asked by XL to, to mitigate some of the trees on their property. And maybe there's, there's a case where from the pole to the, the, the house or the, the resident or the building, there's some work that needs to be done there and, and they can't afford it, so.
Great.
You know, I think there's, you know, maybe there's, there's some room to, um, besides just removing trees, there, there may be reason to, to do some crowning, which is things like protecting power lines or other infrastructure. And then thinning for health, um, or, uh, pruning for, um, mitigation of pests.
Thank you. Um, so I, I like both of these programs. I, I think it's smart to, you know, keep them separate. My thoughts on it is that I personally would like to see if we could do something like $50,000. And if we did the original kind of 30,000 for the matching for, for tree removal, but if we, um, held 20,000 back for potential full grants for our elderly, um, citizens who, you know, uh, may not have the financial means. If it's causing, if it could cause potential safety or property damage and they need help with that, then, um, then, uh, then I would like to see if we could, you know, maybe help with the grants. Or, um, kind of like, as Zach said, with the, um, health and safety, if, if they are asked by XL to, um, clean up the tree and they don't have the financial means, but it's also a health and safety need. And I just wanted to ask also about the, because you have such small amount of space, do you, do you think that it would be more manageable to take reservations for trees ahead of time and then know how many you need? Or would it be more manageable to just buy in bulk and, and, um, you know, push it out there and, and get them all sold out?
So our, our plan is to, um, is, is to, uh, buy to max out our budget and then try to, to sell them. If we don't, we will certainly plant them ourselves. But, but I, I, I think that we'll, we'll sell every single tree that we purchase. And what we'll do is have, um, some sort of sign up where folks can go and, and, and try to get the tree that they would like. Obviously, we're, we're going to go off of a, a list of preferred trees that we have for our city. And, um, and those are the trees that will be provided. And, and hopefully people can get the trees that they, that they, that they would like. We haven't gotten to the point yet where we've, um, made, you know, decided whether or not we're going to have an order form, like, hey, you can pick from these trees and go ahead and place the order. Or we're just going to buy in bulk and this is what we have in stock and you can pick and choose. So that, that level of detail hasn't been worked out yet.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As a part of what I understand to be the process, one, one of the steps is to have the city forest or city staff visually inspect a tree to make an assertion whether it's living or dead. And in my mind, that seems like we're making a judgment that doesn't need to be made and that if a homeowner wants that tree removed, uh, I don't see a situation where we're going to go to a property and say, no, that's not dead. So it just seems like a lot of liability on our part to make that determination.
I can speak to the liability piece because I spoke to, um, Jerry before he left about that. And he said that, and we'd be covered by government immunity, so it would, wouldn't be an issue because we're not placing a warranty on the assessment or anything of that nature. Um, I do believe, and, and you would probably know better than I would, that there's probably some trees that are really unhealthy that a person may or may not know. A dead tree is a dead tree, that's probably pretty obvious, but I don't know if you can speak more to that.
A lot of times we'll get requests for people say, you know, my neighbor's tree looks awful and it's minutes away from destroying our house. And so we'll have our forester go and, and take a look at it. And, you know, sure enough, the tree is fine, it just needs some pruning. And so I think that, I think that is actually a pretty good community service in that we, we have an expert on staff that can go and, and resolve some of those issues between neighbors and, and say, look, you know, yeah, this tree needs to come down or the, this is what we think ought to happen with the tree so that it gives it the best chance of survival. Or yes, that branch is about to fall and hurt somebody. You know, I think, um, I had a guy one time that was working, uh, just a parks worker. He was, he was, um, doing some irrigation work. And he parked his truck underneath a tree at a school. And, um, he just got done eating lunch and went back to go fix, fix his sprinklers. And sure enough, this giant branch fell off the tree and crushed his truck. And I'd never seen anything like that. And there was no indication that that tree, you know, had an issue. But there's always that chance that there's, there's, um, there's dangerous situations out there. 2014, we had a really horrible, um, um, late freeze that, um, or, I'm sorry, early freeze that, that caused a lot of trees in our city to become what's called zombie trees. So they look like they're alive, they are alive, they're alive on the outside, but the inside is kind of rotted and dead. So there's a lot of limbs that are, that are rotting from the inside out. And although the tree looks like it's okay, it's, it's unstable. So if you get a big snowstorm or a big windstorm, those branches might come down. And I think it's a good idea, even though we're, um, on private property and we're, we're kind of putting ourselves out there a little bit, it is probably good practice to. kind of putting ourselves out there a little bit, it is probably good practice to, to have an expert that we can say, "Hey, look, you know, this is, this is something we ought to look at and, and make sure that people are safe." Because I think that's the number one thing, is we want to make sure that our neighbors are safe and we're not causing damage across the city, so.
Ms. Hulteen and then Ms. Weaver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of comments here. I, I support having the city forester come out and take a look. I mean, I have a tree that is growing too close to the foundation on my house that I would love to remove and if I just removed it because I wanted it gone and then asked for reimbursement, it kind of is not the spirit of the program, which is really to help address, you know, critical trees that are affecting the health and safety of our communities. So I do support that and it's good to hear that we don't have the liability. That had been one of my concerns. I really like Councilmember Hoppe's suggestion about including some additional funding that would go towards just straight out grant funding for community members in need. And so keeping the, you know, the $25,000 or $30,000 as written in the memo that would be, you know, supporting, you know, 25% of the cost, capping it at $1,000. And, and that's a great program and it would encourage people who may be, you know, waiting to take care of their trees to take care of them. So I think that's really clean. And then the additional pot of money, I think there's probably more discussion around, you know, what would, how would we define that? And, and we haven't really brought, brought it forward for study, but I really strongly support doing that. I also support, just being specific, that they have to be licensed in the city of Wheat Ridge. There's a lot of people out working on trees that are not licensed in our city, so that is, is important. And I absolutely support that the, you know, the more trees we plant, the better. And so I think that's fantastic. I, I would love, we are Tree City USA. It would be, it would be fun to actually give this program a name, maybe a little bit more exciting than the Tree, the, the City Tree Program. So, so I'd love to see that come forward. Of course, I'm always happy to brainstorm names, as is Councilmember Weaver. So, but overall, this is, I think this is just really important, that the trees in the city are part of, you know, what makes it a great place to live. And there are a lot of trees that are kind of aging out of their, you know, initial planting and it would be nice to see those, those taken care of in a healthy way and see a lot more saplings put in. So definitely support this and would support more discussion around what a straight out grant program would look like for community members. Oh, and I did have a question. Are we talking about a supplemental for this year's budget or are we talking about budgeting for 2020?
That's really up to council. I, I think Ms. Weaver's original request was for 2022, but I believe Mr. DiTulio's request, if he's one of your council members, is this year.
Our District Five Councilmember.
Yeah, so.
Well, if, I would support it as a supplemental for this year. I think that there's, there's, I know, I've been shocked at how many of my branches have fallen this year. So, and we have a stressful summer ahead, so I would support this as a supplemental.
Thank you, Ms. Weaver.
Thank you, Ms. Hulteen. Just to, to go on the, the timing, I think part of the idea was if we could fund it this year, the idea of doing it before we go into winter, when things really do all look dead, you know? And it does become a little bit harder to, to identify dead versus living and things like that. And with the tree, with the tree sale, the exciting thing is, is in, in speaking with, with both Karen and Zach, it sounds like it could coincide with the Tree City celebration that happens in the spring of this next year. So I think it'd be really exciting to just launch those two programs together in some way. I did want to clarify a couple of things. First of all, to, to, to go back to Councilmember Urban's question about code enforcement does get involved, so just that verification that it is dead, I think it takes the burden off of two, two neighbors that might be, might be feuding like, like Mr. Lovato alluded to. The other thing I just wanted to clarify was that while Parks and Rec will identify, they, they can take on the person power to identify the tree, the reimbursement program, I think, would be best run through, on the city end, just because they're best at, at that, that sort of, and I just wanted to make sure we were all clear that, that it, that side wouldn't be Park and Rec, that that would be, is that, is that okay with, with you, Mr. Goff?
Yeah, we can, we can manage that in terms.
Okay, great, great. Thank you.
Additional discussion, Ms. Nosler Beck.
Thanks. I think, I know we don't want to get into like figuring out a name for this, but I think it would be great if we were talking about this as like a tree, like Healthy Trees program or something, instead of Dying Trees program. And also with that, to kind of tack on to what Councilmember Hoppe was saying, both with XL, but in my neighborhood and on my property, I have a, a tree that is almost 80 years old and it, when we went to go get it taken down, it's very healthy and it was going to be upwards of $15,000 to do it. And so I would like to also encourage that with this plan, we don't just talk about taking trees down entirely, but to remove those branches for those health, those health concerns, the safety and health concerns that you had mentioned, Zach. So those are my two recommendations.
Ms. Weaver.
Thank you for that, that comment. I, I think, I love the idea of having more funds to do other things. I just want to make sure that we, we sort of can start this initial program with some, some solid ways to do the reimbursement. And I think there's, there's so many things that it could be expanded to, right? The healthy tree canopy, mitigating for safety, as well as, I know, Councilmember Hutchinson's issues around the ash borer issue, because I think there's a whole conversation around disease and whether or not people could get a, a reimbursement for, for treating disease. So, so I think, would it, would it be acceptable, Mr. Goff, to sort of ask for more research from either staff or Park and Rec on sort of what these comprehensive programs can look like and sort of what, or, or should we keep the, the dead tree? I don't want to call it the Dead Tree Program. What, what is the suggestion from, from over there of, is this a comprehensive program? Is this a program that starts one way and then grows?
Yeah, I think it, it makes sense to be comprehensive. So we have a few things. We have tree replacement. We have old trees that are dying that need to be replaced because we want to keep that canopy. We have Emerald Ash Borer that's just made its way into our city. In fact, we haven't found it in Wheat Ridge yet, but they found it right at the border, just on the other side in Arvada. We haven't seen it in Wheat Ridge just yet, but I'm sure it's here because if it's there, you know, it's, it's probably here. Ash trees, just a brief rundown, are very, very good trees for this climate. They're hardwood and they grow slowly and they grow to a nice size when they're mature. And they're the perfect tree for the front range. And yet we have this pest. So I think it would be good to add that component to the program so that we can start to, it, by protecting our tree, we're protecting everybody else's trees as well. It's, it's kind of, it's one of those things where, you know, if we, we, we can treat our trees, but if we're not treating all the trees, then we're not doing the right thing to, to try to stamp out this pest. So treatment, I think, would be great for ash. Pruning for health, for, for, pruning for safety mitigation, obviously, is very important. We don't want dead property damage or damage to, or injury or death to anyone. But then also, we have a lot of mature trees in the city. Like you were saying, you have an 80-year-old tree in your yard. There's a lot of what we call gold medal trees. We just did our tree challenge, a lot of those trees, we identified were actually on private property. And we would like to see those, not only those trees, but trees like it in other private yards, taken care of so that those trees can last as long as possible. So I think pruning for health. So there's those four components. There's tree replacement, dead trees replaced with new trees, treatment for the Emerald Ash Borer, safety mitigation, it could be for power lines or the zombie trees I was talking about. And then protecting the, the, the mature tree that is, is a specimen, that we want to, we want to make sure lives as long as possible. So I think those four components make sense and we can certainly do some research and, and talk about the details around what that, what that looks like.
Okay, thank you. And just, just to, because you know more sort of on, on the cost of this, Councilor Hoppe mentioned starting with something like 50. If we devote 25 or 30 to just the, and, and I'm not going to say the replacement, because I am going to talk about the, right, there's sort of five things. There's the, there's the removal of the tree and then there's the replacement, which is on your side. And then there's pruning health, I'm hearing, pruning for health of the tree, but also for health and safety of people.
Yeah.
Am I hearing that? And then I'm just going to say diseases, right? The ash bores are current one, but we all know that.
There's other diseases.
More coming. Is 50 grand, does that sound like we could do those things in a reasonable way as a beginning program with that much and deal with all of these concerns that, that people are thinking of? Or is that a conversation that then happens with city staff and as far as, because I'm, I'm hearing more administration now when we get into pruning trees and, and that's a lot more evaluation, right? On, sort of to come back to, to Councilor Hulteen's suggestion. So I guess my question to, to council for discussion is, again, do we, do we separate all these out? Do we try and put them all together? Do we start with one piece of it this year and then move to next year with adding the other things since, since the ask is to, to start it this year? I would love some, some thoughts and ideas from you all.
Ms. Hulteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I love the idea of a comprehensive program. I mean, trees aren't just, a healthy canopy doesn't come about by doing one, one part of taking care of trees at the community level. I feel like the information that was presented tonight was really focusing on the, the issue that we have with, with the cost, the cost prohibition for our residents to be able to remove dead trees. And that's a, a very specific need that is part of the overall tree canopy. So my preference would be to move forward with focusing on that to get started, in part because a lot of these other elements that have been brought up tonight that are valuable and important and I would like to move forward with at some point. But that, to me, sounds like another study session. There's a lot more granular discussion and I think we have an opportunity in the short term to address specifically the dead tree issue. So my preference would be to move forward with some funding dedicated as presented to address, you know, providing some financial support for citizens to do that. And that we then bring back and look at a more comprehensive program. I had actually thought about bringing up the ash borer tonight because they recommend once it's been identified within 15 miles that you, at that point, do inoculation and treatment. And preservation of our canopy, to me, is like our greatest priority. So, but I, I, I think if we get out of the gate and we're like, "We've got this limited bundled money, it can go to these eight different things," we're going to end up really not having the kind of impact that we need. So I think I'd like to, stage one, take care of dead trees and have a second conversation when we've got a little bit more time to look at 2022 and look at how are we preserving an overall healthy canopy through these other mitigative aspects. So that would be my preference. Thank you.
Ms. Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I suppose, I suppose there's several different ways that we could attack this issue. Personally, I feel like from a marketing standpoint, it would be more, it would be better if we went out robustly with like, "This is the program. Dead trees, treatment, safety mitigation, protecting our legacy trees." But if we are, if we are thinking about 2022, so if we're saying, "Well, we only want to do a supplemental budget and deal with just dead trees in 2021," if we're thinking about 2022, we're having those conversations for that budget in six weeks. So, so, you know, so that needs to be, that, that needs to be the direction so that while the departments are putting together their budget, they know that this is like a direction that council is asking them to go towards. So, so putting it on a, a maybe future study session, I think what we should do is, if people want to separate it, and I could go either way, but if people, if it's really important that it's separated and that we hit the ground running immediately with the supplemental budget for 2021 to only address the dead trees as outlined in the memo, then I think that we need to also give direction that we would like the budget to address in 2022, not only the dead trees, but the treatment, the safety mitigation and protecting our legacy trees. And, because I don't, I don't think it's fair to know that we're going to be having this conversation in a couple of months and then come back to, it's not good business to have to come back for, for budget supplementals on a regular basis. And so, for good business, I think that it's important that we give direction now while we're getting ready to have those budget conversations.
Karen and Mr. Lovato, let me ask you, a lot of the trees in our, in our tree canopy or a significant number are in the tree lawn that's on public property. If a homeowner was evaluating the trees on their property, a lot of times you might look at that, that tree in the tree lawn and feel responsible for it. Does the city maintain those trees at their own expense?
Yeah, we, we take care of the, all the trees in the city right of way. And sometimes it's, it's not so easy to identify. Sometimes the right of way is only three feet wide and, and the, the tree is right on the edge or the, the right of way is 20 feet wide. And so it's, it's not always easy to identify. And there's certain areas with new development where part of the, the deed to the property, there's an understanding that, that the new property owners take care of that, the trees in those areas. But they're fairly new. We don't have any mature trees in those newly developed areas just yet. But for the most part, yeah, we take care of all the trees in the right of way and, and we, we budget for that and, and consider that every year.
Thank you. Mr. Stitesk.
Sorry, I know, Ms. Weaver, you were talking about, did you guys say that 50,000 would be enough to launch that program with all five of the pieces to it? Or what?
Well, I think your, your average tree removal, barring any sort of, you know, special circumstance where you need to have traffic control or power lines taken down, anything like that, your average tree removal cost is right around, I would say, to be conservative, I'd say right around $5,000. It can be less than that. It can be much less than that. It just depends on the size of the tree and, you know, all those other considerations you have to make. But if you go based upon that, that's, you know, 5,000 and 50,000, how many trees is that?
10. 10. Well, and it depends on also how much you want to, the matching grant program to be. You know, Councilmember Weaver originally suggested maybe a $1,000 match and Mr. DiTulio's memo, it's a $2,000 match. So it really depends on how much, how much you want the grant program to be also and how, how many trees we get.
Yeah, well, I guess I'm, and I know the, the grant program would be whatever we wanted to be, but how much do you think the other costs would be with the, with the pruning? Well, how much do you think the pruning program might? And I know that, that goes to the volume of people that we decide to open it up to, I guess.
Yeah, I think we can get, so with tree removal, that's, that's different because that's, that's more of a, a case-by-case thing and they can be expensive or cheaper. With pruning, you can, you can standardize pricing as a contractor a little bit easier. And we could actually put together, solicit bids actually for time and material for that type of work, where we say, "Here's three on-call contractors and these are the, the charges we expect from them." And they just, you know, for a crew of three people to come and prune a tree, you know, they're going to charge a flat rate of X amount. And you can actually, I've, it's, it's tough for contractors to kind of wrap their minds around that, but I've actually achieved that before where I've had contractors like, "Look, I just, I just need a crew of three people for a day. Tell me what that costs." You know? And so they can give me that cost and then we can come up with a budget. So to answer your question, I think, you know, we can, right around $1,000 a tree to prune it is the total cost. So, you know, if, if we subsidize 50% of that, you know, or whatever, whatever the plan is, we can, we can probably get quite a bit out of the same amount of money, so.
As we go forward, and, and I'm in support of at least doing some of this this year, so whether it's the so whether it's the twenty-five or fifty supplemental this year to start this program off, and then making it fully robust next year, maybe. But maybe we do it a little bit like the business district model, which is what Treasurer DiTulio used kind of as, as his model here. But there's almost a list of things that some, a business can come in and say, I'm doing my facade plus, I'm doing the parking lot. So, there's a bunch of different, so maybe it's, we have five things for the trees, and they're doing a matching grant to try to, or some sort of a grant to do either removal, get a new one, pruning, disease mitigation, whatever that is. Maybe that's the way we do it, and they can submit their receipts at the end of it, or we can guide them through the process, and then they can submit for some sort of reimbursement, or something like that. But I would definitely be in support of at least starting with twenty-five or thirty this year to get this going, and just doing the removal program now.
Thank you, Ms. Weaver.
All right, I'm going to try and come up with a consensus. What I'm hearing is, I, I'm going to just put some numbers out there. So I am going to put a little bit different numbers than the staff memo, based on what we've heard tonight. And I'm going to split the difference and say matching up to fifteen hundred. And I'm going to say that the, that the, okay, we're really going to come up with a different name than the Dead Tree Program. But the Dead Tree Program will have thirty grand initially this year for this budget, and we will, the consensus is to start with the Dead Tree Program at thirty grand, matching up to fifteen hundred per property, okay, to get the most spread for that program as far as trees. We'll continue to work with both Park and Rec and, and, and city staff on, on some of the other things mentioned around, whether it's close to within a certain boundary of, of the property, or the street, or, or other things that were mentioned. Should I mention both consensuses first, or just one? So, so that would be, pardon? That's a great question. Let's see if I can calculate that in my brain. So, I think, well, yeah, if it's five thousand dollars, should we do a match up to fifty? I think, I think the match should be up to fifty. But for max fifteen hundred dollars.
So, fifty, fifty percent matching grant?
So, I'll repeat that again, yeah.
Per property?
Yes, so, so initial grant, thirty, excuse me, the initial program would be at thirty thousand dollars. It would deal with dead trees. It would be up to fifteen hundred dollars, and up to a fifty percent match, one per property.
And would that require the forester to come out and certify?
And, and with, yes, all of the things that we've discussed with the Park and Rec forester, and the additional, with, with the approval of licensed contractors, all of those things. May I ask for consensus?
Consensus on that? Looks like we have consensus on that.
Great. The second, thank you very much. The second consensus is for the 2022 budget, that we increase this program to sixty grand to include the other programs that were discussed. And that also gives city staff and Park and Rec time to talk about what those numbers should be, as far as what, what Mr. Stites was just talking about, how much around the three issues that we have discussed, which is pruning for the health of the tree, pruning for health and safety of people, as well as diseases. Well, and another thing was mentioned, go ahead.
I'm sorry, the legacy trees? Protecting, like, health of legacy trees?
Yes, protecting mature trees, so that's four. I heard a fifth thing, which was a total coverage grant for seniors.
Seniors or individuals that need?
Seniors are unable to.
Just, seniors or individuals that, that need assistance?
That need assistance. Is that wanted in the consensus, or do we need to take it out? Okay. All right, I'm going to, I'm going to say the four things. So for 2022 budget, it would be pruning for health and safety of, for health of the tree, pruning for health and safety of people, diseases, and the last one being protecting mature trees, the entire, the, the canopy of Wheat Ridge. While also, yes, so that would be five things, while also addressing the dead trees, as it was.
Would that include ash Emerald Borer?
Yes, yeah, so that would, and that's where we'll, we're asking Park and Rec to come back with a, a program on how we would deal with, with, I'm just saying, diseases.
So, so for 2022, it would be thirty still for the dead tree program, and thirty for?
No, the whole program would, would expand to sixty grand, so that's, that would be the whole program. So we're starting with thirty this year, it's expanding to sixty, to include the other things that we talked about, not addition to.
Mr. Mayor?
I would ask us to reserve putting a number on that until city staff comes back to tell us what that looks like. I mean, it might be sixty, but given that we haven't even looked at the budget yet, I would prefer to leave that off.
All right.
Okay.
Consensus on that?
Consensus good on that, okay?
Leaving off the final number?
Yep.
But that we will expand the program.
Yeah, expand the program.
Thank you.
To include the additional services.
To include the additional services.
Can, can I ask for a consensus on the new tree planting program? Are we moving forward with that as well? Are you okay?
Yeah.
If I do that, okay, yeah, I'd like to propose, reach a, ask for a consensus to move forward with implementing a tree sale program, under the awesome new name of whatever we decide to call the program, for Wheat Ridge residents.
Looks like we have consensus on that.
Tree sale program, or did you say replanting? It's, it's?
No, the tree sale.
Sale program?
Yeah, the proposed tree sale program.
For our canopy restoration?
Yeah.
We're all going to be dreaming of names tonight, dreaming of trees.
Canopy enhancements, or something like that. All right, are there, are there further, further facets to the tree program that we need to go over tonight? Okay, thank you very much for a good discussion on that, and I assume that gives you the direction you need to go, go plan a great tree program. Terrific. Okay, thank you very much. We will go to item number two. This is staff reports. Mr. Goff?
Nothing else this evening, thank you.
Okay, and we could either go around the horn on elected officials' reports, or if you have a report, you may give it now. Ms. Weaver?
Just want to thank everybody for all the effort and discussion on trees tonight.
Okay, thank you. Anything, anything further to come before our study session, then we will stand adjourned. We are back here next week in study session, does that sound right? At six thirty. So, go out and be careful out there, and have a great week. Thank you so much. Good night.